Good evening of the Lunenburg Select Board of August 3, 2021. In accordance with the requirements of the Public Meeting Law, we advise that this meeting is being recorded by public access and can be broadcast to public media. The agenda lists all topics which may be discussed in the meeting and those which were recently anticipated by the Chair. Those which may be taken as a result of these discussions, if not all, I would list them in fact pre-discussed. Another item that is not listed may also be brought up for discussion and be extended permitted by the Public Meeting Law. Despite the meeting, I would ask that we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, eternal.
Before we get to the main event, I just will ask if there's any public comment this evening from the Board. Is there any public comment from the public not to do with the workshop? Okay, any announcements? So we'll get right to it. Tonight's workshop on 40B, which will be presented by our Town Council, Adam Costa. I will let him discuss the format, everybody who wanted one should have received the outline of what will be discussed this evening. He will do his presentation, we will have questions and answers on this process and procedure that he will outline, and then we will have a comment period where people can address various parts of their editorializing about the process and about the project, I guess, in preparation for our comment period, which I'm sure Mr. Costa will discuss. So without further ado, I would introduce Town Council, Adam Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, those who have attended, I think most of you are familiar with me at the Town meetings and other public meetings in the past. I'm Adam Costa with the firm of me, Town Attorney and Costa, who are Town Councils and have been for a number of years here in the town of Lunenburg. Tonight's focus is on Chapter 40B of the Massachusetts General Laws, which is the chapter that is commonly referred to, at least in part, as the Comprehensive Permit Law. And so tonight's presentation has been billed as a Chapter 40B workshop. So my objective over the next approximately an hour or so is to work through, in a very basic sense, the ins and outs of Chapter 40B. Chapter 40B is a complex law comprised not only of that state statute itself, but state regulations and a whole series of cases that have been decided over the past 30 to 40 years by an agency known as the Housing Appeals Committee that has sort of filled in the gaps and provided some additional guidance to municipalities and developers concerning the creation of affordable housing under the statute. So there's a lot to discuss. It's a complex and often confusing law. Certainly, we can't get into all the particulars of it in the course of an hour, but I also want to keep your attention and want to provide you with an opportunity, as you just heard, to ask questions, get answers as best I can, answer your questions, and then of course to make any comments you have. I think the elephant in the room, so to speak, is that most of you are aware that the town has received notice of an incoming Chapter 40B development, and that's sort of what has prompted the discussion in tonight's workshop and certainly many further discussions that will occur in the days and weeks and months ahead. For purposes of my workshop over the next hour or so, I'm not going to talk about any particular development, I'm just going to talk about Chapter 40B in a general sense, and talk about the regulations and some of the case law, and talk about the roles and responsibilities of municipal officials and staff, municipal boards and commissions and committees, and then the various standards that can apply under 40B law, which are quite a bit different than what most of you might be familiar with if you've attended traditional planning or zoning board or even select board proceedings in the past. So I'm going to utilize primarily two documents tonight, one you have, I think, in front of you all, which is the syllabus that you see or the agenda that you see here on your screen. It's about four pages, it's done in sort of a bulleted form, and the purpose, of course, is just to guide the discussion as opposed to providing with all the information concerning these topics. The second document is something that is about 50 pages long, so I presume most of you don't have it, I think some of the board members may have it on their tablets, and that is something referred to, and I'll put it here on the screen in a moment, referred to as the Chapter 40B Handbook for Zoning Boards of Appeal. And if you see here at the bottom corner of the screen, this is a document that was created by the Massachusetts Housing Partnership in conjunction with Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as DHCD, Mass Housing Finance Agency, also known as Mass Housing, and Mass Development. And those various agencies, which we'll talk in a moment about them in some greater detail, they're subsidizing agencies under Chapter 40B, those agencies exist to facilitate the creation of affordable housing. So I will say that there is, in maybe some respects, a bit of a bias to some of the statements made within the handbook. Having said that, this is probably the best self-contained guidance document that exists currently, and it's relatively recent, March of 2017, is when it was rewritten, the original version issued back in 2005. I would say this is the best self-contained document to assist municipalities and specifically zoning boards of appeal in better understanding the comprehensive permit process, how it starts, the role of the municipality, the role of the subsidizing agency, and then ultimately how it finishes or how it can finish, what the various options are. So as I work through the syllabus, you'll even see that I've made specific reference there, your first bullet point, see generally handbook, Chapter 1. So I've referred all of you, and we'll go back and forth to different sections of the handbook that provide much greater detail than I'm going to be able to provide you in the short hour or so that we have to discuss these topics. With that said, now that you generally, I think, understand the format, we're just going to delve right into Chapter 40B in a general sense. So what is Chapter 40B? I mentioned before, referred to it as the Comprehensive Permit Law, that is one of the names it has received, it's also been referred to commonly as the Anti-Snob Zoning Law. When it was first adopted, the objective really being to facilitate the creation of affordable housing. There was a recognition by the legislature that in many municipalities, they had all but zoned out affordable housing, and there was a need for affordable housing, particularly in metro Boston, and so this law was adopted. It comprises only four sections of Chapter 40B, the remainder of Chapter 40B deals with all other aspects of housing production, but Sections 20 through 23 are what comprise the Comprehensive Permit Law and are what are often referred to as generally as Chapter 40B. And then you see this reference, 760 CMR 56. 760 CMR 56 is a reference to a particular chapter and section of the Code of Massachusetts Regulations. In fact, I've got those up here too. You can see from my PDF, it's a 32-page document, you can Google it, and this fills in all the gaps in those mere four sections of the statute that create the Comprehensive Permit Law. This provides the additional guidance as to how 40B functions. It defines some of the terminology that we're going to use tonight, some of the terminology that you become more familiar with as the 40B process unfolds in the town of Lunenburg, and addresses everything from, as you can see here, measuring progress toward affordable housing goals, the local, the project eligibility process, the local hearing process, appeals to this Housing Appeals Committee that I referred to earlier, and then the criteria for the Housing Appeals Committee that ultimately issue decisions. All of that is addressed in these 32 pages of regulations, of course supplemented by decisions from the Housing Appeals Committee that have helped to further interpret what the law means. So what exactly is this comprehensive permit? I think that some of you, most of you are probably familiar with special permits, often issued by planning or zoning boards. Some of you may be familiar with variances issued by zoning boards of appeal, administrative appeals that are often brought to the zoning board of appeals. Well, a comprehensive permit is different. Those other things I just referenced all arise under the Massachusetts Zoning Act, Chapter 40A. And in Massachusetts, because Massachusetts is a home rule community, zoning power is generally vested in the individual municipalities. In Massachusetts, we have 351 cities and towns, and we have nearly 351 sets of zoning ordinances and bylaws, because every municipality has the opportunity to regulate its own zoning and to make those decisions at the local level for themselves, for their residents, for their businesses. And so in Chapter 40A, we have a framework, but ultimately, Chapter 40A says to a municipality, you can issue a special permit, but you decide, with some guidelines, you decide what the criteria are going to be. And so if we look to the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, and we see the criteria for a special permit. Similarly, the statute provides criteria for variances. Well, comprehensive permits don't arise under Chapter 40A, they don't arise under the state zoning act, they arise under Chapter 40B. And the concept behind a Chapter 40B comprehensive permit is that it's exactly what it sounds like, it is a single comprehensive permit. It's one-stop shopping for an applicant. An applicant, in lieu of going to the planning board, the zoning board, potentially the select board, maybe going to a conservation commission for approval under a local wetlands bylaw, going to a board of health for an approval under local rules and regulations governing, let's say, septic systems. In lieu of all of those various stops along the permitting path, under local bylaws, local rules, local regulations, the process is consolidated in the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals stands in the shoes of those various other permitting authorities and issues a single comprehensive permit that encompasses all of what I just referenced. So you'll see the next bullet says, you know, what are the roles here of ZBA's, other local boards, municipal officials and staff, and third-party consultants? Well, I just explained that really the box stops with the zoning board of appeals. It's a ZBA to which a comprehensive permit application is made, and it's a ZBA that ultimately issues the comprehensive permit or denies it. Other local boards, and you'll see I've used the capital L and the capital B, and that's because if we go to the regulations that I refer to, where you've got all these definitions, local board is actually defined, I'll highlight it here for you on the screen. So local board has a definition, it's a very broad definition, you can see here, it's any local board or official, including but not limited to boards of survey, boards of health, planning board, conservation commissions, historical commissions, water, sewer, or other commissions or districts, fire, police, traffic, or other departments, building inspectors, city council, boards of selectmen, and then there's even a catch-all at the end, all boards regardless of geographical jurisdiction or source of authority, including those whose source of authority derives from the legislature, shall be the local boards if they perform functions that are typically traditionally performed by local boards. So local boards are, you know, any entities that perform traditional municipal functions. And so all of those local boards, they have a role in the 40B process. In fact, you'll see as we, as we get further along in the presentation, we talk about the public hearing before the zoning board of appeals, when the zoning board of appeals receives an application for a comprehensive permit, they send that application, are obligated to send that application to these various local boards and give the local boards an opportunity to opine, an opportunity to provide feedback, to make recommendations for the zoning boards of appeals, to assist the zoning board of appeals with areas that are not typically within the expertise of a zoning board of appeals. For example, a local wetlands bylaw. The conservation commission might be relied upon heavily by the ZBA in providing feedback when an application is received that implicates a local wetlands bylaw. But all of the authority of these local boards is generally invested in the zoning board of appeals. Municipal officials and staff have the same sort of a role that they would have with respect to other permits arising under the zoning act. They don't get a vote typically on a special permit or a variance or administrative appeal, they have no voting authority, but they have a role in assisting the various boards, and in the case of a comprehensive permit, they have a role assisting the zoning board of appeals in reviewing the application and considering whether to approve or deny the application, and then in justifying that approval or denial or conditioning it if it happens to be an approval. And so municipal officials and staff would have that same role. And similarly, third-party consultants, those of you who have attended a planning board meeting on a meaningful project or a zoning board meeting on a meaningful project, know that these boards often use third-party consultants, and they have authority, in fact, your zoning board of appeals has adopted rules and regulations that give it the authority to engage third-party consultants, those consultants are often engaged at the cost of the applicant, but they work for it, they owe their allegiance to the board, they are peer-reviewed consultants, they review what the applicant's experts are providing to the board to provide feedback to the board as to whether the submittals are truthful, are accurate, are complete, are lacking in some fashion, and how they can potentially be improved, and how a project may need to be conditioned if it is going to be approved. So third-party consultants are used in all sorts of zoning contexts, but especially in Chapter 40B because of the complexity of the law and, as you hear as we perceive through the presentation, often the size and scope of these 40B projects, they tend to be more dense than what would be allowed under traditional zoning, and so consequently, there is often a need for third-party consultants to address things like design and traffic and infrastructure impacts and utilities and things along those lines. So I just made a reference, and maybe I jumped ahead a bit, but I made a reference to the comprehensive permit process, and I likened it or compared it to or contrasted it from the traditional zoning process with respect to complexity. Well, and I said complex compared to traditional zoning applications. Well, what sets the comprehensive permit law apart, sort of the trademark of Chapter 40B law, is this concept of waivers or exceptions. And I'm sure, again, some of you who are generally familiar with 40B have heard a reference made before to waivers or exceptions. So 40B stands for the premise that if it were not for the existence of the statute, as I alluded to before when I referred to the Anti-Snob Zoning Act, municipalities would adopt such stringent zoning controls, whether they be dimensional controls or use controls, that effectively they would prohibit the creation of affordable housing. Affordable housing often is created in denser developments, because from a developer's perspective, if they're going to dedicate a portion of the housing as affordable, they need to be able to develop other market rate housing as part of the same project to offset the reduction in sales price or the reduction in rent that they're going to receive because of the affordability of the units. And so if you're going to develop a 100-unit project, and as you hear, the standard for affordability is typically 25%, the developer's rationale is 25% of those 100 units or 25 units will be affordable for a term of at least 30 years or sometimes in perpetuity. Developers often break even or potentially even lose money when they compare the development cost of those affordable units to the eventual rental price or, or sales price of those units. And so they offset that loss or that breaking even by the development of the other 75 units and not 100 unit development. And they sell those at market rate and they're able to make a reasonable profit. So in order to do this, in order to build denser developments, when the local zoning ordinance or bylaw doesn't allow it, Chapter 40B says that developers can ask for waivers. They can come to the zoning board of appeals and say, please grant me a waiver from the density requirements, please grant me a waiver from the frontage requirement, grant me a waiver from the minimum setbacks required in the district where the project is proposed. And so on a site that might be five acres in a zoning district that requires a minimum one acre per, per single-family home, you'd be permitted potentially to develop five single-family homes if you have adequate frontage for five lots, one house per lot, each lot being one acre in size. A developer could come in on that same parcel, five acres, which under existing underlying zoning, he or she or it could build five units, five homes, and will say, rather than five, I'd like to build 20, and I'm going to seek a waiver from the minimum one-acre lot area requirement, I'm going to seek a waiver from the minimum 100-foot frontage requirement. In order to get these on the site, I'm going to seek waivers from the rear yard setback, front yard setback, side yard setback, and so on and so forth, from the various provisions requirements of your zoning bylaw. So waivers are the trademark of 40B, they're what make 40B work from the developer's perspective, and they're often what leave a bad taste in the mouth of, mouths of residents and municipal officials alike who have to sort of grapple with, well, you know, do we grant these waivers or not? In a moment, we'll, we'll get into some of the realities of, you know, how that decision plays out and how municipal officials make that decision, specifically zoning boards of appeals make that decision. So there are some exclusions from Chapter 40B, so anything that arises under state law. So I mentioned before that if you have a local wetlands bylaw, that the authority of the conservation commission under that local wetlands bylaw would vest in the zoning board of appeals. The ZBA stands in the shoes of the conservation commission. Not with respect to the Wetlands Protection Act, because this Wetlands Protection Act is a state act. So to the extent that an approval is required under the act, which in most cases, an approval is required under both the act and, and the local bylaw, the approval under the act still must go before the conservation commission. The conservation commission doesn't concede any of its jurisdiction under the state act. Same thing, for example, with boards of health under Title V of the State Environmental Code. If it's a state law, there can be no waivers from state law. Again, waivers are from local ordinances, bylaws, rules, regulations, anything that the municipality would typically have jurisdiction of or over, but state law is standards. So an applicant still must comply fully with state law, gets no breaks, can seek no exceptions or waivers from state law requirements. I mentioned in my introduction the Housing Appeals Committee, and I said to you that the Housing Appeals Committee is a state agency, which it is. It is a subsidiary entity or agency within the Department of Housing and Community Development, and it exists really and solely for one reason, and that is to adjudicate appeals by a developer of approvals with conditions or denials of Chapter 40B comprehensive permit applications. That's the sole purpose for which the Housing Appeals Committee exists. It is essentially the equivalent of an appeals court at the agency level for developer appeals of adverse Chapter 40B decisions. Not for, a lot of appeals, a lot of appeals, neighbor appeals, resident appeals still go to the courts, but before an appeal by a developer ever gets to the courts, it goes first, it must go first, through the Housing Appeals Committee. Of course, there's still further appeal to court, but the first stop is the Housing Appeals Committee. And so you'll hear me refer to the Housing Appeals Committee, often referred to as the HAC. You'll hear me refer to the HAC frequently because the body of law that exists under Chapter 40B is largely a body of law that has been established through the Housing Appeals Committee. They, again, have filled in the gaps that exist within the statute and the regulations, provided further interpretation, answered some of the difficult questions that may not be so clear if you were to read through the statute or the regulations. So the Housing Appeals Committee has jurisdiction, and the standard that I'm about to address in a moment, I'll see your different standards of review, apply unless the statutory minimum has been received. And so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because it's not something that is particularly applicable in the town of Lunenburg, but there are communities that can outright deny Chapter 40B applications, communities that can do so without the oversight of the Housing Appeals Committee. Those are communities that have met one of the various statutory minimums that are provided for in the regulations. The most notable of these, and it's probably one that most of you might be familiar with, is the 10% standard. There is a subsidized housing inventory that's kept by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's an inventory of the percentage of your total dwelling units in your community in the town of Lunenburg that are restricted as affordable, meaning they are affordable to households that qualify as low to moderate income households. If you have hit a 10%, a 10% threshold, minimum of 10% of your dwelling units qualify as quote-unquote affordable, then you're not subject to the Chapter 40B law. You can willing-nearly deny Chapter 40B applications, and you're not subject to what I'm about to describe as sort of a harsh Housing Appeals Committee or HAC standard. To my knowledge, and I've certainly reviewed the subsidized housing inventory, there are some other statutory minima. I don't believe any of those minima apply currently in the town of Lunenburg. In fact, they don't apply in most communities, there are very few communities, a handful of the 351 cities and towns, I don't know the exact number because it does vary from time to time, but there is just a handful that have hit that 10% threshold, and there are a couple others that have hit one of the other various statutory minimums. But very few communities fall into that bucket of communities that can just say no to, to Chapter 40B application. So unless you fall into that category, then these standards of review that you see here in the night's bullet, different standards of review, consistent with local needs and uneconomic, these are the standards that will apply, and I'm going to get into some greater detail in the latter part of the presentation, but these are the standards that apply to the review of a comprehensive permit application. So this is what's so confusing and why, you know, we do these workshops with some frequency and typically, you know, on the heels of an incoming, or I guess in the dance of an incoming, Chapter 40B comprehensive permit application. We do these, these workshops in many communities because ZBA's and planning boards and select boards are familiar with the usual special permit and variance processes. They're, they're used to deferring to their local bylaw or ordinance and the standards that are contained within it for reviewing a proposal. Chapter 40B provides its own standard, and it's unlike any of the standards that exist in local bylaws or that exist in the zoning act. If you choose to deny a comprehensive permit application as a zoning board of appeals, you can do so only if that deny is quote-unquote "consistent with local needs." And again, I'm going to pause and get into that a bit later because it's, I don't want to get too far off track, it's a very complicated phrase, but that is the standard upon which the ZBA can deny a comprehensive permit. Similarly, if you choose to condition a comprehensive permit, you approve it, but you condition it, you can't impose conditions, as is only board of appeals, that renders the project uneconomic. And again, not uneconomic in layman's sense, what you might consider to be uneconomic, but that uneconomic under, in the parlance of Chapter 40B, under the 40B umbrella based upon the definition of the regulations and the case law that has further interpreted that, and we'll get into that as the, as the presentation proceeds. But this is the, this is the end-all be-all of 40B law, these two standards, that is only board of appeals has to sort of keep you back in its mind as it evaluates a comprehensive permit application. So before I get into the ZBA process, which is really where I'm going to focus most of my time here, I wanted to talk a little bit about project eligibility and the stages of state and local permit. So you can see here, project eligibility, comprehensive permit process, and final approval are the three stages, and I think that, I know that the handbook that I referred to these earlier, I think adds a couple of other stages as well that are sort of subsets of these, but these are the three principal stages of a Chapter 40B application. If I'm a developer and I am proposing a Chapter 40B housing, I first have to identify a project subsidy and get project eligibility determination. Once my project is determined to be eligible, I then come and commence the comprehensive permit process locally before the ZBA, that's the local process, the second bullet. And then, once I obtain, if I obtain, my comprehensive permit, I then proceed to seek final approval from that same subsidy that issued me the preliminary eligibility letter to start. So those are the three steps. So number two here on the syllabus is project eligibility, and I had raised this earlier and I refer you to Chapter 3 in the handbook, because this is sort of where we are with the Pondview Commons Project, the one that I referred to earlier, the one that is forthcoming. We've been notified that an application has been made to Mass Housing for a project eligibility letter, and so this is the first step in the process. It's not a step that necessarily implicates, it certainly doesn't implicate the ZBA yet, it implicates the town to a very limited extent, but this is what is being sought, a determination of eligibility by the project subsidy. So there are five different project subsidies in Massachusetts currently for Chapter 40B projects. DHCD, DHCD handles mostly, in fact entirely, what are often referred to as friendly 40B projects, ones that are done in conjunction with municipalities where the town is a co-applicant. Anything that is not a so-called friendly 40B, a more traditional 40B, gets subsidy either from the Mass Housing Partnership, from the Mass Housing Finance Agency referred to as Mass Housing, or from Mass Development, I said five, I meant four, or from Mass Development. Those are the four project subsidies that exist currently. There was a fifth, but doesn't provide, doesn't provide subsidy any longer. So those are the four subsidies that currently exist. When application is made to one of these subsidies for project eligibility, the subsidy essentially looks at, at three chief issues that are referred to in the regulations. Is the entity that is seeking eligibility a qualified entity? Is the entity a nonprofit organization or is it a limited dividend organization? Chapter 40B has certain profit limitations imposed upon a developer. Contrary to popular belief, developers of Chapter 40B projects don't often realize a windfall from their developments. There have been some stories of those that have, but there's been a real effort by the state in recent years to better police the cap on profits that is, again, another sort of hallmark of the, of the 40B law. So you've got to be a qualified entity, either a nonprofit or an entity that has agreed to limit its dividends to the cap that is imposed under Chapter 40B. The project also has to be fundable. That's not something, again, that the town determines, this is the determination made by the, the subsidizing agency, but the subsidizing agency looks at it, looks at the housing market, looks at the project economics, and says, you know, if this project is going to be know, if this project is going to be built, you know, is it going to be a successful project financially? And the subsidy has to be convinced that it will be before the subsidy will issue a determination of eligibility. And then finally, and this may be the most obvious, but nevertheless, it's in the statute or regulation, as you say, the applicant must show some evidence of site control, whether they own the site, or they have an option to purchase the site, or they have a signed purchase and sale agreement. They've got to have some right to make application by virtue of having an interest or a future interest in the property. So they've got to exhibit site control. These determinations, again, are reserved solely for the subsidizing agency. And then we get to this important bullet, and I don't often spend much time on this one because often when I'm called to a municipality to give a 40B workshop, it's too late, the public comment period, as it's referred to, is over. Well, in this case, you're still within your public comment period. So what happens is when an application is made to a project subsidy like Mass Housing, Mass Housing prepares a letter notifying the municipality that it has received an application for a Chapter 40B project in that municipality, and provides a period of 30 days, subject to extensions, for the municipality to respond and to provide a list of its concerns. And the recommendation, and you'll see it in the 40B handbook, is that those concerns that are expressed are concerns that fall, you know, within the purview of the subsidizing agency. So what does that mean? Well, if the town has concerns regarding the appropriateness of the site for residential development, if the town has concerns about the appropriateness of the project design, relationship to the existing housing market or future housing market, consistency with master plan, or non-compliance with any of the eligibility criteria up here that I cited to earlier, or the town wants to highlight for the subsidizing agency that there has been significant effort by the municipality in recent months or recent years to address affordable housing needs in the community, this is the opportunity for the municipality to advance all of those comments to the subsidizing agency, with an understanding that the subsidizing agency will take that into consideration in determining whether to issue a letter of project eligibility. The cold hard reality is that far more project eligibility letters issue than are denied. I wasn't at the recent site visit, but my partner was, and I've consulted with him, and I've spoken a bit with the town manager, and I think a statement might have been made at that time, maybe by the representative for Mass Housing, that, you know, Mass Housing generally denies letters of eligibility to approximately 5% of applicants who submit Chapter 40B applications. I was surprised, quite frankly, that the number is that high. I thought it would be lower than 5%. Because my experience, you know, having worked on affordable housing projects for 15 years now, is that it's very, very difficult to persuade subsidizing agencies to deny project eligibility. Project eligibility is an approval of the project. The project still has to come before the local zoning board of appeals. It's simply a preliminary determination that these eligibility criteria are met, and that the subsidy can generally support the project subject to the municipal approval process. And when efforts have been made by other municipalities that I've represented to highlight even some of these concerns, concerns with the density of the project, concerns with the design and the location of a project, the typical responses that I've received from the subsidizing agencies have been, we defer those determinations to the local zoning board of appeals. And on appeal, we defer those determinations to the Housing Appeals Committee. So that's the reality of it. I want to give it to you straight, and I don't want to sort of sugarcoat the reality of 40B. You know, 40B is a difficult law to work within as a municipal official, as a municipal board, as town council. But I thought it was important that we talk a bit about the local comment process, so that you understand, you know, what it is that the town is trying to do now to be responsive to this opportunity that it has, for better or for worse, notwithstanding the odds, to make Mass Housing aware of some of the concerns that I understand exist with respect to the project that is to be proposed in the town of Lunenburg. So with that said, let's talk a little bit about the comprehensive permit process, which is really where the focus of this presentation is, should be, and really where most of the discussion lies within the Chapter 40B handbook that I referred to before. Chapter 4 of that handbook, which comprises about half the text of the handbook, is focused on the comprehensive permit process. And you'll see within this, item 3, I've got a few additional references to sections of the handbook that I didn't want to reiterate in full, but I'll refer to them when we get to them. And just so all of you are aware, because I know you don't have the handbook before you, the handbook is available. If you simply Google "Chapter 40B Handbook for Zoning Boards of Appeals," it'll be the first result in a Google search. It's on MHP's website. I think it's on a couple of the other subsidizing agency websites as well. It's publicly available. It's about a, what's the total number of pages? It's a 48-page publication. So all of you have access to it online, and you're free to look into it for additional information. So the comprehensive permit process begins with an application to the zoning board of appeals. There are some minimal requirements that are established by state regulation. Many zoning boards of appeal, including your zoning board of appeals in Lunenburg, have adopted rules and regulations specific to Chapter 40B applications. You have such rules and regulations that go above and beyond these basic submission requirements. But at a minimum, what the state says is, when an application is made to a zoning board of appeals, you've got to include a copy of the project eligibility letter received from the subsidy. You've got to include an existing conditions report relative to the site. You have to provide both site development and architectural plans for your proposal. If you're proposing a subdivision, you've got to show a subdivision plan, utilities plan, tabulation and calculations of, you know, number and size of buildings, number of units and so forth. And then, of course, as I alluded to before, to the extent that you're seeking waivers, and, you know, in 15 years, I've never been involved in a 40B project and hasn't saw a single waiver, there's always at least one, and usually there's several pages, you've got to submit a copy of that waiver list initially. Sometimes the list will be amended through the comprehensive permit process, but that initial waiver list needs to be submitted with the application. So these are the basic submittal requirements. In addition to other information required by local rules and regulations, and then any applicable fees. Communities have fee structures, fee schedules, that typically include both a processing fee, what's often referred to as an application fee, and then consultative review fees. And those are the fees I've referred to before. They're monies that are placed into an escrow account. They're used by the zoning board of appeals to engage its own consultants, its own experts, to assist it with the review of a proposal. And any money that's not used gets refunded to the applicant. So that's the basics of the application. So before a public hearing opens, there's not a whole lot to occur, but there are a few items I thought should be referenced. So I mentioned earlier on that when an application is received by a ZBA, copies of that application should be circulated to other local boards to solicit their input early on at the process. Additionally, municipal officials, municipal staff should be involved early on at the process, so they're familiar with what the zoning board of appeals needs from them to do its job, to fully vet a project, and either to be prepared and have the justification to potentially deny the project, or to condition the project appropriately. And then you might start considering, even before the hearing opens, who those third-party consultants might be that you'd use. And there's some lengthy references, or lengthy discussion, I guess I should say, and the follows references within the Chapter 40B handbook to the procurement process with respect to third-party consultants. I will tell you that for most consultants, procurement's not necessary. Some municipalities choose to procure those through 30B procedures anyway. Some choose to use sound business practices because, well, it's always the sound thing, to use sound business practices. But there's no obligation with respect to many consultants, if they're engineers or architects, because there was an amendment to Chapter 30B that was adopted a number of years ago that clarified that those particular individuals are exempt under 30B regardless of the value of the contracts. But you might start considering who those third-party consultants should be. There are consultants that have particular expertise with 40B developments. Sometimes that's needed, sometimes it's not. If you're doing a traffic study, I'm not sure that it's necessary that your traffic peer reviewer have experience with 40B development. Traffic for a 40B development with 200 units is the same as traffic analysis for a non-40B development with 200 units. But there are other aspects of 40B where it may be beneficial that your third-party consultant be generally familiar with the process and the review standard that will be applied by the ZBA. And that's, of course, where the role of municipal council comes in as well, because we've worked on many 40B projects and can assist the zoning board of appeals in the town with identifying those consultants and bringing on the proper experts to assist the ZBA. Then we get to the public hearing process before the ZBA. So there's a section in the handbook, it's on page 20, I'm going to scroll to it now, that talks about recommended protocol. And I didn't reprint it in full, because I didn't think it made much sense. And of course, this is just a recommendation from the author, the principal author of this particular publication, Joy Noel, and she's worked on many, many 40B developments. But this is her suggested process for conducting the public hearing. Opening the hearing, reading the notice as you would do with any other application, introducing the zoning board of appeals members who will be sitting on the case, explaining the public hearing basics, and that would be, you know, the basics for any public hearing in terms of maintaining decorum and, you know, not interrupting the speaker and so forth, addressing comments through the chair typically, but also providing some basic guidance on 40B process and how it might be somewhat different from applications made under traditional provisions of Chapter 40A. Then read correspondence that's been received, either in advance of the opening of the public hearing or since the last public hearing, if it's continuation. Invite the developer to present its project. After that presentation, give the ZBA members an opportunity to ask questions, open the hearing to the public, to solicit their feedback, and to allow them to ask questions and make comments. Site visits are always recommended. I failed to reference, although I think it was a bullet on the syllabus, that there is a site visit that occurs as part of the initial public comment period, and that just happened recently for this Pondview Commons project. But the ZBA members should certainly take a site visit. It's always my recommendation if they do so, as part of its review of the comprehensive permit application, once that application is made, so all members of the ZBA can familiarize themselves with the layout, the side, the orientation of the project at any time. You know, it says here, decide on a date to continue the public hearing. Rarely are public hearings opened and closed on one night for, frankly, any application that comes before a zoning board of appeals, certainly not for a comprehensive permit application. We'll talk a bit shortly about some of the deadlines that exist under state statute. But, you know, I've been involved, notwithstanding the deadlines that exist, those deadlines can be extended by mutual agreement of the parties. The last, I guess it's not the last project, the last 40B project I've been involved in, but it's probably the last, you know, controversial 40B project that I was involved with not long ago, a couple of years ago, went for, I think it was just about 20 months, start to finish. So, you know, the process is a lengthy process, depending upon the extent of reviews and the cooperation from the applicant, and timely submittals of requested information by the applicant, and timeliness of peer review reports and so forth. So there are often continuances. So this is the recommended protocol for public hearings. And, you know, future sessions can be conducted in a similar fashion. You wouldn't need in each continuance to give an applicant the opportunity to make an entirely new, complete presentation on this project. But what often happens with these projects is, after the first or maybe the second session of the public hearing, you identify the topics that are clearly going to be at issue. Because maybe there may be others that are not at issue. Maybe you're dealing with a site that doesn't require any significant landscaping. So landscaping is not going to be a topic of discussion. You're not going to have a landscaping peer review. So that may not be something that is on your motive list of chief topics for discussion as the process unfolds. But maybe, you know, overall site design density, you know, architecture hits. Maybe you have civil engineering concerns, stormwater concerns. You put those on a list, and then you often structure future sessions of the public hearing to sort of revolve around a topic. So maybe session three of the public hearing is on the topic of civil engineering. Session four is on the topic of traffic. Session five addresses noise and lighting and other nuisance effects that maybe have been concerns of the board or of the public. So you can often structure future meetings around specific topics, which provides some semblance of organization to the process as a whole, and also provides those in attendance, residents, butters, other concerned citizens, with a focus for their comments. Because if you open the door to unlimited comments on any aspect of a project from day one, it gets unwieldy for a chair to try to maintain control of the meeting and the focus of the meeting, and to solicit useful feedback that the ZBA can then process and translate either into an approval or a denial. So the next bullet here just says safe harbor notice. There are certain circumstances where if you've met a statutory minimum, you would provide notice within 15 days of the opening of the public hearing, that you believe you've met the statutory minimum, so that you reserve your right to later claim that. This was in addition to the law back in 2008, when they substantially revised the regulations that I referred to earlier, they rewrote them, start to finish, consolidated previously to separate chapters of the Code of Mass Regulations. And when they did that, they added this new rule that you've got 15 days to notify the applicant as a zoning board of appeals, if the applicant is satisfied, if you believe that you've satisfied a statutory minimum and can therefore deny the project, if you wish to later deny it on that basis, or else you forfeit that opportunity. Again, not sure that that's particularly relevant in Lunenburg, but it's worthy of note here. I got ahead of myself a little bit in talking about issue identification, but these are, you know, some of the examples that I've already tossed around, civil engineering, traffic environment, architecture, landscaping, lighting. And there are others, these are just a few, but these are, you know, the chief topics that often result in, you know, quite a bit of discussion. Utilities sort of goes hand in hand with civil engineering, but, you know, water sewer, electric, those sorts of discussions for some projects can sort of blossom into, you know, meaningful discussions and peer reviews and whatnot. I referenced earlier that peer review consultants are important to the process, and I just reference here for your future citation, should you need it, and it's also cited in the Chapter 40B handbook. This chapter and section of Mass General Laws, 4453G, this is the section that zoning, planning boards, and conservation commissions, and boards of health may already be familiar with. It's what authorizes those various permitting authorities to require the applicant to pay monies to the board, which can be used for the board or commission to engage these third-party consultants at the applicant's cost to peer review certain aspects of a project. We talked about procurement requirements. It's important to note that what can be done is the project can be reviewed, but it can't be studied. So, you know, I've had a few boards that I've represented wanting to conduct full-blown studies on particular topics that might be of concern to them. Not appropriate to use, certainly, I mean, if it's within the purview of the ZBA, the ZBA could use its own funds, if it has access to them, or town funds, to study any topic that's within its purview that might have some bearing on an application that's before it. But with respect to utilizing the developers' monies, those monies can be used to peer review the applicant's own submittals. The applicant's engineer submits site plans with a stormwater report, and the board hires its own professional engineer to review those plans and to review and comment on the stormwater report and its correctness. That's different than saying, we want to engage an engineer, or we want to engage a wetland specialist, because we're really concerned that there may be spotted salamanders on the site, and we'd like a full-blown study to be done, send somebody out there to do some research. That's a full-blown study that is not something contemplated under 4453G as appropriately passed on to the applicant in terms of cost. But again, you know, anything within the scope of the ZBA's jurisdiction is ripe for discussion. ZBAs, and this is, I think, a trend I've seen in recent years, have been using work sessions. And I referred earlier to a recent, more controversial 40B project I was involved in representing a ZBA. And we used work sessions on a number of occasions when we came across topics that required greater discussion, and we felt that the discussion was dragging on and sort of perpetuating meetings that could have been resolved more quickly. I mean, the process, the 40B process can be sort of a lot for a zoning board of appeals to manage. ZBA members are going to have many questions. There's going to be a lot of flow of information coming from both the applicant and its own consultants. And there's going to be a lot And there's gonna be a lot of feedback from the public. And so to, to try and work through technical issues, you know, between your peer review engineer and the applicant's engineer within a, a, a public hearing session can be challenging. So the concept of a work session is sort of exactly what it sounds like. It's a, a meeting between meetings. A quorum of the board is not present because you can't, you can't meet behind closed doors with a quorum of the board present. But a representative of the board might attend. If it's a five-member board, you could have two representatives attend without it constituting a quorum. Maybe the applicant's in attendance, maybe town councils in attendance, one with the applicant's council. Maybe you've got some consultants, engineers or architects. And you work through issues between meetings, between public hearing sessions so that greater progress can be made during the public hearings themselves. So work sessions can be used to the advantage of both ZBAs and applicants just in terms of being more, more efficient in trying to work through issues that, where the, the board and applicant, you know, might reach a stalemate during the, during the hearing process. You know, negotiation compromise can be a component of a 40B application process. It's often a component of a successful approval, not so much a component of an unsuccessful denial. So, you know, I'm not here to tell you as a zoning board of appeals whether you should negotiate a compromise with an applicant. There are sort of pros and cons to that sort of an approach. The risk if you deny a chapter 40B application, and we'll get into the, the, the appeal process in a moment. The risk if you deny a chapter 40B application is that it's appealed to the state and the state approves it and the municipality loses any control. Because you now don't have the permit decision that you issued as a ZBA, subject to 10 or 15 or 20 pages of conditions that you have the authority to enforce. It's higher power, it's the housing appeals committee at the state level that has issued the permit likely without all of those various conditions and protections. But not every project is appropriate for approval. And if, if it's not and the board chooses to deny it, you've just gotta be, you know, prepared for, for that risk. Pro forma review. So it used to be, and those of you who know anything about the history of 40B, 10, 12, 14 years ago. It used to be, and in fact, I think you've even maybe got a holdover in your 40B rules and regulations, I can't recall. Many communities do because their regulations were originally adopted 15 or 20 years ago. It used to be that pro formas, financial statements, were required as a matter of course from all applicants. CBA's wanted to see, you know, okay, you, you say that as a developer, you're not gonna make a windfall. We wanna see that on paper. You say that you need to build out a property as dense as what you're proposing or else you can't make money off the proposal. We wanna see the proof of that. Show us your, your pro forma. In 2008, and in fact, just after 2008 with some HAC case law case that was decided out of the time of Amesbury, the housing appeals committee determined that, no, that's not appropriate. The pro forma review is something that is undertaken by the project subsidizing agencies. It's the subsidy that reviews the pro forma initially as part of that project eligibility phase and then ultimately as part of its final approval after a comprehensive permit issues, if a comprehensive permit issues. And it's not appropriate generally for a zoning board of appeals to review a pro forma. Shouldn't be of any interest to a ZBA. There is an exception however. And the exception is, is as the project, the, the, the project permitting process unfolds, if the project, if, if the permitting process is coming to a close and the zoning board of appeals begins to fashion conditions of approval and vocalizes those potential conditions and an applicant responds by indicating that it can't comply with those conditions. It is, it, it must receive a waiver, it can't accept a denial of a waiver or else that would render the project uneconomic. Do you remember that, that phrase, uneconomic from before, it would render the project uneconomic? In that instance, and only in that instance, the zoning board of appeals can then say to the applicant, okay, approve it. Show us the pro forma that proves to us that you can't go ahead and, and accept our denial of waiver. You can't go ahead and accept this proposed condition of approval. Show us that it will render the project uneconomic and do that by, by virtue of, of providing to us your financial statement, your pro forma for the development. So it's a little different than it used to be, you don't get the pro formas upfront unless an applicant voluntarily provides it as part of the application package. And you certainly can't conduct a pro forma review with a third-party consultant early on in the process. You can potentially do it later in the process. I'm not gonna talk again about waivers because we've already sort of gotten, got into that a little bit, that waivers can be requested and the waiver list can be amended during, during the permit process. So let's talk a little bit about the decision itself. So you can see three options here, approval, approval with conditions and denial. I'm just sort of putting it out there, this is, you know, these are statistics. So I, I, I hate talking 40B in the context of statistics because you're not a statistic as a town. The project that is soon to be before you is not a statistic, it's an actual project. But we do have to look at statistics to inform ourselves as informed citizens, as members of local boards, as public officials. We need to know, you know, what the odds of success are if we approve, approve with conditions, deny a project, appeal by neighbors, appeal by an applicant. We need to know the risks associated with the decisions that we might make as well as some of the benefits that might accompany them. So these are what the statistics say. Approvals, straight-up approvals are rare. In fact, again, in 15 years, I've never seen a straight-up approval. Yes, we'll approve your project exactly as you've presented in a one-page approval. Approvals with conditions are far more common. In fact, they're the most common result of a chapter 40B comprehensive permit process. They're routine, they increase local control because your zoning board of appeals then has the ability to enforce the comprehensive permit condition. Decrease cost to the town because the town is not subjecting itself to an appeal by the developer because it hasn't done the proposal. And there's less uncertainty because you don't know what might happen in litigation because presumably if you approve it with conditions, although the conditions could be appealed, that is far less common than appeals of straight-up denials. And then of course, the third option is exactly that, you straight-up denial. Risky, but still it can be occasionally justified. And we're gonna talk in just a moment about the standard for denials versus the standard for approvals with conditions. Decision format is not a whole lot different than the decision format for any other sort of project. If any of you were, and I know some of you are, planning a zoning board members who've drafted decisions before or chapter 40A for special permits or variances and such. And so typically there's a section of the decision that provides some procedural background. You then make findings of fact and then based upon the findings of fact, you issue a decision with certain conditions of approval. If the decision isn't approval, obviously if it's a denial, it won't include conditions. And then you would attach any appropriate exhibits like, like waivers. There are deadlines to be mindful of and I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on, on the particulars, which is why again, you'll see I've just referenced the handbook, page 16. It's actually been done in a handy format here. A little confusing at first blush, but this is what it looks like. First column is number of days, second column is the deadline, third column is the action required and fourth column is just a legal reference as to where that deadline appears. So I've cited all of these in the syllabus, but you can see, you know, some of the important ones. So 30 days here, no later than 30 days from the receipt of a comprehensive permit application. The zoning board of appeals has to open the public hearing, so that's somewhat more expedited, in fact, quite a bit more expedited than under 40A. You know, you get a special permit application, you've got 65 days to open the hearing. Only have 30 under chapter 40B. You have 180 days here to complete the process, so that's from the opening, shouldn't say complete the process because it's not the full process. To complete the public hearing process. You have 180 days from the opening of the hearing to then close the public hearing. As I alluded to before, there are times when, when, with some frequency in fact, the parties agree to extend that deadline. Even in contentious, with contentious projects because an applicant well knows that, you know, if it hasn't timely provided information that the board has asked for, and it's not often, you know, the applicant's fault anymore, there might be the board's fault if it can't have its peer review consultant respond to something in a timely fashion. Consultants are busy, they have other projects, something that was anticipated to take 15, 30 days could take 60 days or 90 days. An applicant knows that if it took the applicant 90 days to return something to the board, the board asked for, the applicant can't then say, well, you just wasted half your 180 days, give me my permit. Because even the housing appeals committee is gonna send that back to the board and say to the applicant, you've gotta give the board a reasonable opportunity to vet your project and to make an informed decision with all the information for it that it has reasonably requested. So the 180-day timeframe is routinely extended to something more than 180 days, but it does require acquiescence by the applicant agreement between the applicant and, and the board. 40 days at the end after the close of the public hearing to render a decision. Again, that's more expedited than other, under some traditional chapter 40A standards like special permits, 90 days. Here, here you've only got 40 days. And then there's a 20-day appeal period after the decision is filed with the town clerk. So again, there are several others, I didn't want to touch upon them all, but you can refer to page, say, what was it, 16? Page 16 of the handbook for those deadlines. Okay, so the last topic here, and I see I'm coming up, you know, just about an hour, so I'm gonna work through the next maybe 10 minutes or so of this last topic and then, and then I'll yield the floor and take some, some questions or whatnot. These are the legal standards, and I referred to them before, and there are literally two standards, consistent with local needs and uneconomic. The consistent with local needs standard is what applies if a zoning board of appeals denies a comprehensive permit. The uneconomic standard, potentially followed by the consistent with local needs standard, is what applies in the case of an approval with conditions. When there's an approval with conditions, the applicant must, must first prove, it's the applicant's burden first to show that those conditions are under the project uneconomic. And only once the applicant meets that burden, does the burden then shift back to the municipality, the zoning board of appeals specifically, to prove consistency with local needs. So in both cases, the burden can ultimately be the municipalities to, to establish consistency with local needs. But where it's been a straight-up denial by the zoning board of appeals, you just start out straight away with this question of consistent with local needs. And so what does it need for a decision, for a denial specifically, to be consistent with local needs? Well, it's a balancing test with a significant presumption in favor of the need for affordable housing. So the state says, you as a zoning board of appeals have to balance the regional need for affordable housing, which is a presumptive need, with local concerns. And you'll see again here, capital L, capital C. And when I prepared this syllabus, I first said, okay, I'm just gonna insert the definition of local concerns right here to show all those who have attended. And then I read the definition of local concerns. Local concern means the need to protect the health or safety of the occupants of a proposed project or of the residents of the municipality to protect the natural environment, to promote better site and building design in relation to the surroundings and municipal and regional planning, or to preserve open spaces. So I've tried to take that and sort of put it into bulleted form, so these are, these are local concerns. But then I, I said, you know, that's not enough because when I read that as, you know, as if I were someone who wasn't especially familiar with chapter 40B. I mean, most every 40B project I've been involved in diminishes open space. It's a, these projects tend to be far more dense than what would be permitted pursuant to underlying zoning. And by definition, if they're more dense, then they are eliminating usually open space. I routinely hear concerns about health or safety. If you're increasing vehicle trips, because the site is big and today and you're proposing a couple hundred or more units on the site tomorrow, well, doesn't that additional traffic mean safety concerns? I've never known as a zoning board of appeals to not think that it can maybe better design a project than the applicant has designed a project that's coming before it under chapter 40B. So what's important to understand in this context, and again, this is something you wouldn't know unless you've read all the chapter before 40B case law and some of the secondary sources, you spent some time on Google, you know, searching for secondary guidance that has been prepared in Massachusetts relative to the chapter 40B comprehensive permit law, how it's been applied, how it's been interpreted, decisions that have been rendered by the housing appeals committee. Well, the HAC has said that these concerns have to be valid, they have to be compelling concerns, they have to be well-documented concerns. And so, for example, in the context of open space, there have been many, many arguments by municipalities that projects diminish open space. And the HAC's response, and in several instances, the, the court's response when the HAC decisions are further appealed to the courts has been, no, it has to be critically needed open space. Not just we like it to be more open or this open space is important to us. We mean critically needed. Open space that might somehow have a link to, I don't know, proximity to a town well and, and concerns regarding contamination of that well. And if the land is not kept open, you know, we can connect the dots and say that there's a public health or safety risk that would result. So the, 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 the courts, the housing appeals committee has really said, you know, yeah, the definition sounds like it benefits municipalities or like it's easy enough to satisfy, but we're gonna make it a bit harder to satisfy. So you just have to keep that in mind as a zoning board of appeals when you're trying to apply this sort of four-part local concern test. That you're looking very closely and trying to connect the dots between, you know, what you've got before you, the local concern that's been raised and, you know, past, past guidance from, from the housing appeals committee. Local requirements must be essential to protect these items. So what the housing appeals committee has also said is, if there's a way that you can condition the project to address the concern that you have, then you can't deny it. You've got to condition. So that's something to sort of have to be mindful of as well. The, the denials when they're appealed to the housing appeals committee will be rejected if reasonable conditions could be protective of local concerns. Conversely, if this is important, it's not all doom and gloom, denials will be supported if there's no practical way to conditionally approve the project to protect those local concerns. And so that goes back again to the role of the zoning board of appeals with the assistance from its consultants, with the assistance from council. If it's posturing itself to deny a comprehensive permit, to be prepared to connect the dots, as I described before, between local concern and, and the, the, the practicality or impracticality of addressing it by way of a condition. So when we talk about conditional approvals in this uneconomic standard, the applicant must first show that the conditions of approval are under the project uneconomic. Then the burden shifts, as I alluded to before, to the zoning board of appeals. And then the zoning board of appeals will prove that the conditions are consistent with local needs. So what does uneconomic mean? This might be the most confusing aspect of 40B law and most zoning board of appeals don't fully comprehend it, and I don't blame them. Most legal counsel are not adept at working through the, the financial aspects. I mean, I, I certainly appreciate and understand the concept and I've litigated cases involving reasonable returns. But I've always got the expert there, somebody with better credentials than I, financial credentials, to, you know, address the issue of what constitutes reasonable return, what constitutes financial loss. And so that's the standard. Public or nonprofit organizations would have to suffer a financial loss for a project to be uneconomic. If it's a limited dividend organization, an organization that is expected to realize some return as opposed to a nonprofit that wouldn't be, the limited dividend organization cannot realize reasonable return, then the project would be deemed uneconomic. So what's a reasonable return? Well, it's really a return that is within the subsidizing agency's limitations, whatever limitations issued within the project eligibility letter, without substantially requiring the applicant to change rent levels or unit sizes. And then there's a different formula for for-sale developments and rental developments. If it's a for-sale development, the formula is actually fairly simple. It's one that we can probably all comprehend or if it were explained to you in greater detail, and I'm not gonna do that because we're an hour in. But essentially, the, the profit is capped for a 40B for-sale development. There's a profit limitation of 20% of total development cost. So you calculate total, total development cost for a project, you determine what 20% of that total development cost would be, and that's the profit limitation. What the courts have said, what the HAC has said, is that a return that's less than 15% is deemed uneconomic. So in other words, to say that differently, the return is expected to be somewhere between 15% and 20%. For a rental development, it's a little different, the return on total development cost should be 450 basis points higher than the 10-year treasury rate, which of course differs from date to date, time to time. So it's a more complicated equation, it's sort of a snapshot in time. But that's what would be considered a reasonable return on a particular rental development. So consultants, financial consultants can calculate these, certainly most, most. Certainly, most developers of 40B housing have consultants that have some familiarity with Chapter 40B, that have prepared their pro formas, that have run these numbers for them. Because 40B isn't like anything else. When I, I don't do a lot of private 40B work, but I've done a few private cases over the, a few private projects over the years. And when I do, when a client comes to me and says, who do I engage as consultants? I tell them, find a financial consultant that knows the ins and outs of 40B. Because 40B has a lot of soft costs that are not, simply don't exist in the context of other projects, both front-loaded in terms of prior to issuance of the comprehensive permit, and then, you know, on the tail end of the project in terms of ongoing monitoring of the project, affordable housing, fair marketing plans, and implementation of those plans, long-term affordability, cost certifications with respect to profit limitations. So there's a lot of additional costs to a developer under Chapter 40B that the developer needs to be aware of and needs to know whether the project will still be an economic project when all is said and done, notwithstanding those additional costs. So that's my hour and 10-minute presentation. Again, just the tip of the iceberg on 40B, but I'm sure you have some general questions, specific questions. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman, and happy to answer further questions as I rise.
Thank you, Mr. Cason. Can I give you some tips or commentary?
So we can work through the question and answer, and then I can, we can talk a bit about those as well.
Sound good.
Sure.
I will, let's see. I'll open it up to the board first, and then, as people in the audience, if you have questions, there's two microphones on either side, please use them so everybody can hear your questions. And again, this is question and answer, there is a comment here that has been talked about at the end of this. So, from the board, I will start from the end. Mr. Cason, do you have any questions for Mr. Cason about the process?
Just wanted to clarify.
No, you gotta press, hold the...
There you go. Just a point of clarification. Under the decision section, there's a comment of appeals and sets other parties. Can you just define what other parties means to the audience?
Page 1. Page 1, okay. Other parties, you said? So I don't, I don't see that here. I mean, I'm certainly happy to talk about appeals and who can file appropriate appeal. When a comprehensive permit decision is rendered, much like any other permitting decision from a zoning Board of Appeals, it is filed with the town clerk. And there is a 20-day appeal period, that's the same 20-day appeal period that applies to variances or special permits. And during that 20-day appeal period, the developer, if dissatisfied with the decision, whether it's a denial or an approval with conditions, and the developer is dissatisfied with those conditions, the developer can file an appeal, and again, as I alluded to, that appeal would go, it's obligated to go, to the Housing Appeals Committee. Other parties, meaning residents, interest groups, can file appeals as well. They would have to do so within that same 20-day period. Their appeals don't go to the Housing Appeals Committee, because the Housing Appeals Committee's jurisdiction is limited to review of developer appeals. Those appeals go to typically either land court or superior court. You know, any party can file an appeal, I mean, I say this, I feel with all too much frequency, that, you know, anybody can walk in at the courthouse and file an appeal. The clerk is not, you know, asking for your credentials when you walk in the courthouse door. You know, whether that appeal survives a day, a week, a month, depends upon whether you have legal standing to sue. And so there are some parties in the 40B world, much like there are in the 40A world, traditional zoning approvals, that have presumptive standing, because let's say they're immediate abutters to a project site or abutters to a abutters within 300 feet. Those individuals might have presumptive standing. But, you know, any other individual or interest group that will suffer some legal injury or believes it will suffer some legal injury and thinks it can prove that it will suffer some legal injury from a project, would have the right to establish that standing in court and to challenge the decision it issues. So I've had instances where approvals with conditions issued from local boards, the developer appeals to the Housing Appeals Committee because the developer is dissatisfied with condition numbers 1, 3, and 5, and then a resident or an interest group appeals to superior court because they didn't want the project to be approved in the first place, with or without conditions. So that's a possibility as well, you can have dual appeals.
Anything further, Mr. Cason? Mr. Royer? I've never been standing. Mr. Franco?
I'm still digesting, so I have nothing to add.
Mr. Jeffords?
No surprise, a couple questions. One of the, if there's a project that's proposed, and I want to be vague, but I think, I think I'm not being very vague here. If there's a project that's proposed that wants to add in water, for example. So there's two questions here. The first is, can you, you can explain this to the select board separately. Can you explain the precedent as it pertains to a water district in the ZBA's authority over a water district? And then I have additional questions on that.
Sure. So I'm gonna speak, much like you did, in generalities, and I'm gonna do that for a couple of reasons. I think, I know that the selectmen can appreciate it, and those of you, maybe members of the zoning Board of Pliny Board can appreciate it, but I'm gonna explain it for maybe all of the rest of you. Certainly, I don't bind the town. I'm gonna be presumably counsel representing the town, the zoning Board of Appeals, through the permitting process, if an application, when an application is made for the Pondview Commons project. So I want to be mindful that I may be asked by the zoning Board of Appeals at that time to give particular opinions to the ZBA, to represent certain interests that the ZBA may have at that time. And if the case results in litigation, whether it be an appeal by residents of an approval or an appeal by the developer of a denial, I'm gonna be in a position where I'm representing the town's interest in that litigation. So I'm gonna speak in generalities, but I'm not gonna speak about particular circumstances over, about which we don't necessarily have all the information yet. We don't have an application from Pondview Commons. We don't have a complete waiver list submitted to the town yet in Pondview Commons. So speaking about that project specifically is a bit difficult to do without all the information, and is, I think, dangerous from a legal perspective in binding the town to a position. With that said, I'm going back to maybe where I started about 45 minutes ago when I showed you the definition of local boards. Local boards... Put it up on the screen again here. The definition of local board is purposely very broad. And so, on the one hand, you'll notice that there are references here, not just to the traditional local boards that you might expect to yield their jurisdiction to the zoning Board of Appeals, like boards of health and planning boards, but also to water, sewer, or other commissions for districts. So there's that word, district. And then it also goes on to say, all boards, regardless of geographical jurisdiction or source of authority, and specifically in a parenthetical refers to sources of authority that are from special acts of the legislature or other legislative action, shall be deemed local boards if they are performing functions that are usually performed by locally created boards. So there is some case law, some housing appeals case law, that indicates that districts, water districts, sewer districts, historic districts, that either encompass only a portion of a municipality or encompass a number of different municipalities, or portions of a number of different municipalities, may fall under the umbrella of a quote-unquote "local board", and their jurisdiction may transfer to the zoning Board of Appeals. I don't love that answer, I think that that's a difficult answer. It's difficult because districts are, that are created through special legislation, for example, often function in a quasi-independent fashion. But that's not, that's not the entire answer. Because often, with respect to a district, let's say, that is created by special legislation, maybe it encompasses only a portion of the town or portions of multiple communities, may be bound by its legislative edict that established the very district to begin with. May be bound by contractual obligations. I've had a case not long ago where there was an administrative consent order that had been entered into that placed binding contractual obligations on a district. And as I represented the ZBA through the 40B process, the question arose, well, can the ZBA, you know, involve itself in the particulars of that administrative consent order, that contractual relationship between district and Department of Environmental Protection? So the general rule is that while the Housing Appeals Committee has been quick to interpret this phrase, local board, very broadly, the courts have also been, I don't wanna say quick to rein in the HAC, but they have from time to time, reined in the HAC when they believe that the HAC is delving into matters that go beyond the scope of its authority as an administrative agency. So matters of real property interest, for example, needed easements over adjacent properties, let's say. Contractual obligations that a party might have. Works of the legislature. So in any instance, when you're dealing with a district, let's say, or some other quasi-independent or quasi-public agency, and the question becomes, can the ZBA issue waivers on their behalf? Can the ZBA waive fees that might otherwise apply? Authorize water or sewer connections, electric service? It's not, there's no simple answer, you've gotta look at the totality of all that I just described. And the zoning Board of Appeals has to determine based upon that, you know, can we act, or are there matters beyond our jurisdiction, even under 40B, even with the HAC oversight, that would prevent us from doing what it is that the applicant might be asking us to do?
In the event that the zoning Board of Appeals has authority over the water district, can the ZBA regulate the size of your water main going down the public way?
If the zoning Board of Appeals were to be determined to have the authority to step into the shoes of the district, then the zoning Board of Appeals would have all the authority that the district has. The ZBA would be acting on behalf of the district. So typical requests that are made, I mean, usually the way that this arises is an applicant submits a comprehensive permit application to the zoning Board of Appeals and says, among the permits I'm asking the ZBA to issue is a water connection permit, and I'm also asking for a waiver of the connection fee, or a partial waiver of the connection fee. It's the district that would have the authority to authorize the connection, to determine the particulars of how that connection is designed, where it's placed, application fee that's paid in connection with the connection peremption. All of that authority would transfer to the zoning Board of Appeals if the district is determined to be a quote-unquote "local board".
So in the event that the ZBA has authority over, to act as, for, has authority over the water district in functions and that capacity as part of the comprehensive permit process, in the event that the ZBA, through that authority, can regulate the size of their water main, can an applicant then present an argument that a search of size is necessary? And in that, for example, couldn't an applicant say, yes, for the product I'm presenting, a search of size means necessary. However, I need something bigger than that to be approved, or else this becomes uneconomical because of so many outside of the point. So I guess I'll ask this more clearly. When that decision of determination is something uneconomical, is that limited, completely purely limited, to the application in front of the ZBA? Or can other factors play into that determination of uneconomical?
Okay, so I think I follow the question, and I think the answer, it's a multifaceted sort of hypothetical that's not that much of a hypothetical, right? So, but I think the answer to that question is, yes, that the test that the HAC applies, or would apply, in determining whether a project is rendered uneconomic by a condition imposed by a ZBA or a refused waiver by a ZBA, is particular to the application that's before it. The fact that the applicant might have other interests at stake unrelated to the project that is before the Housing Appeals Committee, or even before that, before the zoning Board of Appeals, I don't think is relevant to the analysis. I'm trying to think, I've read a lot of 40B case law. I don't think that I've, I can, I can point my finger to a case where the Housing Appeals Committee has looked to other interests of a developer, let's say, in the vicinity of the site, other financial interests that would be impacted unassociated with the project, or the project economics, or the pro forma submitted for the project, and said, we're gonna, we're gonna allow the applicant to rely upon this in establishing that a condition renders the project uneconomic.
Now, when we, get this, when we look at proximity to wetlands, as we mentioned earlier with that, local, local law laws kind of are not necessarily applicable. Can the ZBA impose restrictions related to, you know, if there's a water source nearby that feeds into a large water service, can they put restrictions on use such as, you know, no outdoor car washing, et cetera, because of runoff, I can intentionally go into that area? Can those kinds of restrictions on use be applied similar to how we plan for, or would be able to put restrictions on use?
Yes, I mean, certainly, the scope of authority under general zoning law is that restrictions on use are permissible as part of a permitting process, a special permit. The same rule applies under a comprehensive permit. The ZBA would have the authority to condition its approval on, with restrictions that it believes are necessary to be protective of those local concerns that I referred to before, one of which is public health and safety, open space, and the environment would be included, and that would encompass wetlands. So the answer to that is yes. The developer would reserve the right, without having to explicitly do so, the developer would have the right, is probably a better way to say it, to challenge that that, that condition renders the project uneconomic. Might be hard to do if the restriction is no car washing in this particular location of the site. They would have to say, you know, that's gonna have such a significant impact on my ability to sell or rent these units because buyers or renters, tenants, are not going to wanna buy or rent a unit where I can't wash my car, and it's gonna have such an impact on my ability to find buyers or tenants, and it's gonna render the project uneconomic. Might be really difficult, probably would be really difficult to connect those dots. So that's an example of something that would probably, I don't see too many appeals to the Housing Appeals Committee if that's the only gripe that a particular applicant has. If there were more significant restrictions on use, that could indeed have a meaningful impact on the ability to sell or rent units, then it could be appealed, and it would be appealed under the uneconomic standard.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. One of them, pretty straightforward, but I just want to be clear. The entire project would have to be engineered and peer reviewed before any approval was given. So obviously, follow that more extensive, the project that is potentially longer than your peer review and the open, that public hearing could go on. Would that be a reasonable assumption?
Yes, I think that there is a correlation between the complexity, the size and complexity of the project in terms of number of units, land area, differing components, rental and ownership components, multi-family and single-family components. I think there's a correlation between that and the complexity and the length of the permitting process. Interestingly, the 40B regulations don't acknowledge that, they just put this blanket 180-day deadline. But my experience is that, yes, more complex projects, the one I referred to that was, whatever, 19 months in the making, it had, you know, two separate entrances, there was, there were multi-family buildings that were gonna be for rent, there were single-family homes, it was an actual subdivision. So when there's multiple portions, the reviews are more comprehensive, and so the process tends to take a bit longer.
Thank you. Now, in the local board's definition that you have up there, and also in your presentation, you talked about... you talked about the permit being before the zoning board of appeals, and they would have all the authority of those local boards. There's no mention in that definition of legislative authority. And if a local board, whether it's a town board or an out, an out situation, as you know, a separate one of districts, one of district board commissioners, if they don't have the authority themselves, but they have to rely on, by, by our own charter, legislative authority to do certain things like extend districts, does the 40B case law show that that is something that is possible within this scope? Because I don't see any of these definitions.
Sure. So, uh, so the, the, the easy answer to the last part of your question is, it's not in the definitions, which is why you don't see it. The, the case law is a bit unclear, I don't think that there is a definitive answer I can give to that question, yes or no. What I can say is that I've consistently been surprised, although I shouldn't be any longer because the, the, the HAC has shown a tendency, time and again, to favor the creation of affordable housing over the importance of what municipalities believe to be local, local concerns. But I've consistently been somewhat surprised by the extent to which the Housing Appeals Committee is comfortable overriding or allowing the zoning board of appeals, or instructing the zoning board of appeals to override actions that would need to be taken by other local boards, however broadly that might be defined. And in some instances, matters that would require even town meeting votes. But I don't want to say, I certainly don't want to make a blanket statement that if there is legislative authority, and again, I, I understand the hypothetical you've asked, but I also understand where the hypothetical is coming from, if there's legislative authority that vests a particular local board with the right to do X, Y, and Z, and the only way that it can do something beyond X, Y, and Z is either amend its legislative edict or get some approval from the legislative body, you know, can the HAC in every instance step in and essentially affect that approval, issue that approval on its own, even though the legislative body hasn't done so? Can it alter, effectively alter legislation? I'm not comfortable committing and saying that it can, and I think that there would be, I think it's case by case, it depends upon the, the, the stringency, that's not a word, on, on the severity, the, the explicit language of the, of the, the legislation. And it depends upon, you know, what sort of legislative vote would be required and to do what.
So, that, just one short follow-up to that, and that is, if the zoning board of appeals, if you're saying you're popular, and the zoning board of appeals does not feel comfortable because it's not written, is, I'm not going to ask you not that answer, but I'm going to ask a question anyway, and that is, is there grounds to deny because they can say, I can't do this because I don't have the authority to provide these things? That's, that's the question, I don't want response, I just want the question to be over. I will open it up to the public. If you have a question, please come to the microphone, you don't have to wait for me to call you, we can line up so we can get these shot and approach here. Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If Rogers, if you have this hypothetical question. If a parcel of land, a large parcel of land, was divided off to accommodate a 40B program, comprehensive plan, and if it was approved, and part of contention is that water must be used within the district, but in the case of a 40B, the powers to be lost and has said, that's not going to comply, you can use the water from the water district. If that's the case, and as I said, it's a larger parcel of land, the adjacent parcels of land, would they necessarily automatically receive the right to use the water? Realize that it's not 40B.
So, for you, Mr. Chair, in, in a vacuum, I'd not be prepared to say automatically. What I, what I don't, I've not looked at, I understand that this is, you know, more than just a hypothetical. It would depend upon, I think to a degree, the extent to which that right would exist by virtue of the water service being available under the existing regulations governing authority of the water district. I would not be prepared to say that automatically, by virtue of the fact that through the 40B process, water was extended, that a property that is not the subject of the 40B application, not the subject of any HAC jurisdiction whatsoever, would automatically, automatically have the right to connect to water.
You're talking specifically about the, the extra land, so-called?
Correct.
Okay. This, this is a very important part of this analysis for obvious reasons. If you allocate funds or divide the cost of, of bringing a utility by 200 units versus a whole bunch of other units unknown at this place, the numbers will be different. So, it could be conceived or construed that, that that would place undue burden on the developer. Follow?
Yes.
Okay. But my, my take is, the crucial issue as it pertains to supplying water is, the district says, we can't supply water outside the district, it's, it's overridden by somebody else, but now we're talking about the other. So, I, I think it's an important consideration because there are big financial ramifications of, of that, if they can or they can't.
And I just want to make clear in further response, just going back to what I said earlier. I am not necessarily of the opinion that the Housing Appeals Committee has the authority to extend the water district, and, and I'll speak for this specific project and specific application. I'm not, I'm not going on the record saying that I'm of the opinion that the HAC has the authority. I'm indicating that based upon my familiarity with case law, the HAC has not been shy to exercise and extend its authority from time to time, even in areas where maybe 10, 15 years ago, we didn't think it ever would. So, I, I have that concern, generally speaking, but I'm not going on record saying that I'm of the opinion that in the, the Lunenburg Water District can be directed, or the ZBA can be directed as standing in the shoes of the Lunenburg Water District to somehow extend that district. I have not gone on record with that opinion.
And I, I appreciate your, the discussion on this, and please, I'm, I'm not trying to back you into a corner, but I'm, I'm just trying to understand better the, the options that do exist, or the pitfalls that are presented in this, and I appreciate your discussion. Thank you. Mr. Watt?
Uh, just a couple of questions on just the, some of the definitions that we didn't kind of go over a little bit. As far as the 40B affordable housing, is the, I understand is that apartments are one for one, so an apartment, under definition, is seen as affordable?
So, the way that it works, through you, Mr. Chair, the way that it works with apartments, there, there was a, a policy determination years ago that there was a, I don't know if it was a greater need for rental housing, but there was a, there was a desiring part of the state to incentivize the creation of rental housing as opposed to for sale housing. So, with a for-sale development, let's go back again for, for the sake of simple numbers, for that 100-unit development. Typically, the 40B standard is 25% under most of these subsidy programs. 25% of the units have to be affordable to households with an area leading income of seven, with, with a, with a, an income of 70 to 80% of the area leading income. The other 75 units with 75% of the development is market rate. And so, when that development gets built, 25 affordable, 75 market rate, you go to that subsidized housing inventory that's keeping the tally of how many affordable units you've got here in Lunenburg, and you're trying to get to that 10%. They put 25 in the category of affordable, and they put 75, they actually put all 100 in the category of the total number of growing units, but only 25 of those go in the category of affordable.
Correct.
With rental, they said, even though the same 25% standard applies, 25% of the units are, the rental units are affordable, the other 75% are market rate rentals, we're going to allow the town artificially to put all 100 units in the category of affordable units on the inventory, even though 75 of them are not affordable. We're going to do that in, as an incentive to developers to build rental housing as opposed to for-sale housing. And so, that was, that was a policy adopted before I, long before I even started practicing, and it still exists today.
Okay. The reason I ask this basically is how originally, I mean, recently has added a lot of rented property in this town, moving towards that idea of moving, showing our desire to become an affordable town. The other, my next question is, is, we have a situation in the town where some, some units are being marketed in a way different than they were originally intended and zoned. So, there is a area where it's, it's seen as a condominium, but they are right now flat out being done as renters, with no intentions of sale or no option for sale given to the people who rent it. What would be the process for us to go and have those deemed as being apartments as they truly are?
So, um, the, the process would be to consult with the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD. DHCD is the entity that maintains the subsidized housing inventory.
Okay.
When you develop, you know, if you've got an inclusionary housing bylaw, and separated apart from 40B, you, you require that, you know, all developments of over X number of units dedicate 10% of their units as affordable. In order to get those affordable units on the subsidized housing inventory, you fill out what's called the local action units form, you submit it to DHCD, they process it, and they add the unit to the inventory if it qualifies. So, you need to consult with DHCD, and they would indicate, you know, what the proper process would be. I, I do want to just offer a point of clarity, because I think it applies to the question you just asked, and maybe the way you responded to my answer to the question you asked before. Having a, a, a great number of rental units in the town, well, it might show a general desiring of the part of the town to create more rental housing, which we know has been a desire of the state to incentivize the creation of that sort of housing, and maybe some of that is, is affordable just in terms of the dollars and cents, unless it's subject to an affordability restriction. And unless it's part of a project where the minimum percentage, 25%, was, were, were affordable rental units, you don't get to count all the units. So, the fact that you might have, you know, we have this 10-unit building in town, and we have one unit that's, that's a rental, so now we want all 10 to count on the subsidized housing inventory, it wouldn't work. The fact that you have a whole bunch of rental housing that you've created recently in town that is being offered at rates that are fairly inexpensive as compared with market rates in the surrounding communities, or even near Lunenburg, if they're not restricted as affordable with some deed restriction or a regulatory agreement on record, then they don't qualify as affordable. This has been a fight with DHCD over the years, because there are many communities that say, listen, we've got, you know, we've got mobile home parks, that, that, we've got residents of those mobile home parks that are living at a far less cost than you could live anywhere else in the community. We've got this, this facility or that facility, we've got, there was the Hingham case years ago, where they had the, the buy-in facilities, where you paid a cost to buy in, and you paid a monthly rent, even though you had an ownership interest, and they wanted to qualify them as rentals, and the state said, no, they're ownership. So, there's been this back and forth with DHCD and the HAC over the years concerning, you know, how to, how to get these units qualified on the inventory, and DHCD has been, you know, somewhat stingy in terms of how they've interpreted.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Berger?
Again, very general question, piggybacking on a lot of the utility questions. If a project were approved with utility extensions that required approval through the state, increase in water withdrawal, sewer extension, there's no obligation for the state to do anything other than their normal process for those permits, correct?
Correct. So, there's no, there's no mechanism under 40B to obtain waivers from state laws. So, if an applicant is designing a project and can't comply with the Wetlands Protection Act, well, they can seek all sorts of waivers from the local bylaws. So, let's say you've got, if you're in a community, I had a project a number of years ago, they had a 25-foot notice term zone within the 100-foot jurisdictional bounds of the Conservation Commission. There were all sorts of waivers from that 25 feet, right? But there were certain other aspects of the development that even under the Act couldn't be built the way that they were being proposed. Even if the comprehensive permedition and all the waivers were granted under the local bylaw, that project could never, I would advise the ZBA, if I were representing the ZBA, I would advise the ZBA to approve that project, subject to all other permits and approvals of state, federal issuing to the project, and when the applicant can't get an order of conditions from CONCOM under the State Act, that's between them and the state.
And the obligation to obtain those additional state permits is at the applicant's expense?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Beermore?
Evening. Peter Beermore, 22 Pleasant Street. Question came up at the Finance Committee meeting last week, and I'm curious if anybody here has the historical insight on a 40B case that commenced, I believe, in 2006 in this town, ran a couple of years, was disapproved by the town, and then spent 10 years kind of moving its way through the, the state court system. What was the, the cost to the town, ballpark, associated with representing the town through that, through that legal endeavor that we, that we went through?
I, I don't have the exact amount of the time, I would, I would take the wild fabric and will accept the wild stuff.
That was a capital.
I think it probably was around, over the course of the appeal process, in the range of $100,000 to $120,000. I think that's, that's my fair guess of what it was.
Okay. One other question, there was a, there was a reference that you made with respect to the master plan. And Lunenburg, while having a, a 300-year history, and, and lots of decisions that are made over the course of our history in terms of where we develop and how we develop land, particularly over the course of the last 20 years with the developments that were discussed earlier by other commenters, we do not currently have a master plan in effect in Lunenburg. And if we were to make the argument that a proposal does not fit with the makeup of our town, and where large-scale developments would normally sit as a course of density and available infrastructure and that sort of thing, in the absence of an approved master plan, does that put us in additional jeopardy?
I wouldn't say, through you, Mr. Chair, I wouldn't say it puts you in additional jeopardy. It just, potentially, and, and I don't, and I, when I referenced the master plan, I was looking for the, the, the language of the chapter 40B handle, because it was even somewhat more doom and gloom than my, than my summary was. When, when, when it cites with a comment here, and the bases upon which the town may claim that the project is inappropriate, and therefore shouldn't be issued project eligibility, as I said, it's rare for the agencies, for the subsidizing agencies to reject these requests for, for eligibility determinations. And I, I put master planning as one ground, so you would obviously not have that ground if you don't have a master plan. How much of a loss is that? Well, I would have to presume that there was something to be gained by you having a master plan and using that as a basis to write to the state, write to the subsidizing agency and say, please, please reject the application, and the odds were never going to be that good that that was going to happen anyway. So, I wouldn't say that it puts you in any jeopardy whatsoever. It just is one less argument that you can sort of throw at the wall and hope it'll stick when you're, when you're notifying the subsidizing agencies of the concern that you have.
So, and I, I probably should clarify, I wasn't thinking of this in terms of site approval, although maybe, maybe it has bearing on the site approval part of the process, but rather was part of the finding of the zoning board of appeals, you know, and, without speaking in league leagues, because I'm not an attorney, this thing just doesn't fit where you're looking to put it. With the lack of having, being able to substantiate that with a master plan, is that less of an argument?
Uh, it doesn't, through you. It doesn't, through you, Mr. Chair, it doesn't concern me, and the reason it doesn't concern me is twofold. So, one, the master plan has no legal effect in Massachusetts, different from most other states. In most other states, the master plan, once it's adopted, given all the effort that goes into creating it, has some legal effect, it can be relied upon the way that zoning amendments or bylaw can be. That's not the history of zoning and land use restrictions in Massachusetts, so the master plan process in Massachusetts needs to be followed by the incorporation of zoning amendments that put into effect the short and long-term goals of your Massachusetts. So it's a two-step process, and far too often I see municipalities spend time, effort, and a lot of money, master planning, to get the document for it to go directly to the shelf and gather dust, and they never turn to the last five pages where it says you need to contact town council, or contact, you know, me, your town planner, whomever, and get the process rolling to make these changes to your zoning in the next three to five years, and then these changes in the next five or 10 years, to put into effect in the long term the objectives that you seek to achieve. So because of that, it has no legal effect, so that doesn't concern me. Second of all, it is probably the most common argument waged against 40B development, that it just doesn't fit with its surroundings. Very rarely is a 40B fit with its surroundings. As I mentioned, 40B development tends to be more dense, so typically it's the albatross, it's the 100-unit development in the single-family home neighborhood, or immediately adjacent to. So that tends to be the norm, and that hasn't, you know, based upon, again, my familiarity with the cases, those that have gone to the HAC, and those that have simply been decided by local zoning boards and appeal, you know, that's not in and of itself a basis for denial. Now, that's not to say that inconsistency with its surroundings, or the neighborhood, or the character of the town, or the area of the town, you know, does not bear some relationship to other grounds for potential conditioning or disapproval, that, you know, listen, this is a quaint residential neighborhood with narrow, curvy roadways that can't handle the sort of traffic that would be, that would result from a 200, 300, 400-unit development. Well, now you're into traffic, and because you're into traffic, you're into potential public safety, and so if they can't maintain adequate site distance because of the curvature of the road, if the roadway can't handle the capacity, doesn't have the capacity and the need to have to maintain the number of vehicle trips, all of that may be a basis for potential conditioning or denial of the project. So there are sometimes still ways to get there, it's just not quite that true.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Anybody else with any questions? Great opportunity, anything you have on to know about 40B, we're afraid to ask. Wow, repeat customer.
Sure. I'm going to come back to what the selectmen were talking about earlier, but it's, how much does the town have the authority to put conditions? So in this example, if utilities are coming all the way from one spot to another, can the town condition that the, like, the roadway is being put back, you know, could be redone, or has to be back to the same condition that was when you started, and put that as a condition to the developer? On that scene, that we have this instance of how much of the cost of the state is helping us with maintaining our roads right now. So it's kind of a way of us making sure we're good stewards of the state's money.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. So certainly, the zoning board of appeals has the authority to condition a project much the way it would under chapter 40A, if it were a project that required a special permit. So if you ask that same question in the context of a special permit, an applicant is required to install or extend utilities, to do so with a street opening or road opening permit, they're going to disrupt the condition of the roadway, can they be required to repair it, to replace it, to restore it as nearly as fractual to its condition prior to the work? I would say absolutely, and you could do the same thing in the context of chapter 40B. Typically, the issues don't arise, anything that is directly related to an impact generated by the project, anything that is directly related to a necessity of the project can be conditioned. Typically, where the complications arise are, you know, issues of a responsibility that the municipality might have to provide a utility, or provide a service, make capacity available. When it's not available, when the service doesn't exist, to what extent does the applicant have the ability to demand, to what extent does he have the obligation to extend the utility, extend the service, provide it? That's where the complications arise, and you get into a gray area. But when it comes to, hey, listen, the developer's going to have to dig up the roadway to extending the utility, can we make them put it back? Absolutely.
Anyone else? One last thought. Okay, I want to thank our town council for an excellent job, an excellent presentation, and thank you for the very softball questions you've done. I really do appreciate it, and I appreciate the position you're in, and I look forward to working with the CBA and the town, going forward as this project progresses. The comment period, so the selector is going to receive comments related to the 40B site eligibility application from Pondview Commons at 318, 390, 400 Howard Street. So anybody who has any comments they'd like to include, many people have already done that, you can email them to the town manager, and she will distribute them to everybody who needs to know, and ensure that they are included in the comment package. Do we have an idea when that, we're going to have that extension, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, so, I think sometime by the end of the month, so don't hesitate, so please, anybody who has any comments regarding the project, or anything, whatever your concerns are, please send them to us, somebody can talk to them. Want to say anything on that?
Right now, our deadline for comments to the state is August 16th. They did our site visit, offer that we can extend that deadline, considering we've already had a number of comments, as well as the site visit, as well as the panel of boards, some of the discussions, so they understand that we need additional time to put our comprehensive line together. We will request a length extension.
Somebody would like to offer comments now, this would be a time to offer a public comment on it, not a question to the town council, but just a comment if you would like. No one? Okay.
You got one?
Please, yes.
I'm wearing a mask because I'm inside, I've had my two shots.
That is fine.
Maria Alatella, I've lived on Howard Street for 50 years, my husband's lived on Howard Street 74 years. Nobody ever asked us what we thought about it. We have funds on Howard Street, working funds, that's how I believe Mr. Jenkins makes his This is all being done to us, with no regard to us. The state is regarding housing, affordable housing. What about us? Do you know what's going to do to our properties? We have 10 and a half acres. I think that's a sizable amount, and I would never divide it to sell it off. Even if I was destined to, I would, I just don't understand how the state can come in and say to people, you know, that's a farming area, have any of you been out there? Okay, so you all agree with me, don't you? So the state can just come in and just do this to us? I'm so mad, I can't cry, I'm just really angry, I want to know where to put my anger. Who do I really contact? I mean, don't we have any representative? How come there's not somebody from the state down here listening to this? If anybody can see Howard Street, I can understand the TRICOM, I can understand rail and road. And those people aren't too happy with it, but I can understand it. But to do it on a road that is so dangerous, it goes up, it goes down, it goes up, it goes down, it's very narrow, if you walk your dog on it, anybody that doesn't walk on Howard Street would agree with me, you have to jump on the side of the road, because they're going 50 miles an hour, even though it's posted at 25. So now I'm coming here, and I feel like it's hopeless, not because he said it was hopeless, but it made it sound it. It seems like the state can do anything that they want, as long as this colony is affordable, while Mr. O'Brien doesn't need affordable. I'll be on any committee to help, or to listen, or to write letters, I just don't understand what's happening. It's a farming community, I'm not exaggerating that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. My only comment back to be, if there's someone in the state who I do, so we have our state representative, the Navarro State Senator, we also have another representative in town, because Lunenburg is split into two districts in the state house, or just the house of representatives. So Mr. Representative Kishmerick would be the other one to write to, and then our state senator from Lunenburg, John Herman. And I would express those opinions you just shared with them, saying that, you know, while you support affordable housing here, it needs to be, there should be restraints on what the state can do, and the powers that the Housing Appeals Committee should have, and you should state protect. That's the only, it's a state law that passed, what was it, 1969, is that correct? So it passed that way, and as our town council said, there are some things that they are seeing the House of Appeals Committee do, that they never thought they would have the audacity to do in the year six. The only way they get to change is by changing the state legislation. So I was talking first with this.
I would say that if you could submit a letter, you can email it to me, to offer our information. As town council pointed out, our 30-day comment period, one of the opportunities to address is the appropriateness of the state for residential development, so we'd be pointing out things from your perspective in your letter that qualify our development.
To the previous speaker, you know, one of my good friends, Michelle Hyer, lives right across the hill next to where the DeBette courts live. And so I'm very familiar with the entrance for, you know, the property maker, it's just right across the street from their house. I'm very familiar with the concerns that you have, and many people who live in that area have been in the town for a very long time, and it's going to have a huge impact to you. One other question to the developer that was asked to the state as well, was, you know, if all these, if all the plans go forward, how long will this property be under construction? And I think the answer we got was somewhere between five and seven years, between the 40B and then the other, the, that are already approved and have property. And what is the impact to the neighborhoods, and is it reasonable for people to live next to a construction zone for seven years? And the answer I heard back from the state was that that's not something that a program can consider. So I do think that this law needs to be revised, you know, and I think that it's something that together we can build our program.
Mr. Beermore.
I'm also a repeat customer. Good evening again, Peter Beermore, 22 Pleasant Street. I don't know how well this is for the comprehensive response in the town, if you're right, but I'll state it, really as a response to Mrs. Alatella's comment. I'm actually a little bit moral, I'm not as pessimistic. And the reason why I'm not as pessimistic is because we actually have a history in this town of fighting against ridiculous proposals. And we had a lot of policies back in 2006, I remember there were firm members of the zoning board of appeals here, at least three of them were on the board at that time. And we went all the way to the Supreme District Court and lost. Because of the time involved and the changing market conditions over time, that development wasn't good. And, you know, I sat on another one, when I was associate member of the zoning board of appeals, but we approved, it was a decent proposal, it also wasn't good, because the economic conditions changed at the time. In this case, we have an investor who made a terrible investment, and is leveraging a state law to put the town over a barrel. I think that that needs to be heard, if not by the state housing authority, the state court system. I think there is unsettled case law with respect to the legislative powers of the town when it comes to the sewer district, and to the water district when it comes to the water district overall. That's unsettled case law. We have an opportunity to state our case, we'll start with the ZDA, I'm 100% sure that they will do their due diligence, I'm 100% sure, that they will make sure that if this thing comes to pass, the appropriate safety measures are put into place, the appropriate infrastructure is put into place to support it, and the appropriate conditions are put into place so that that infrastructure does not irrevocably change the character of Lunenburg. Now, it's going to cost us some money, and it's going to take us some time, but I'm 100% sure that we're capable of doing it, or at least putting up a really good fight. Thank you.
Just following up on that, I want to say that I agree with the speaker saying that we, we have group boards, and, you know, I've seen the work the CBA has done on many projects over the years, I know many of you members well, and I know we'll get a full and fair hearing, and there will be no stone unturned in doing this. I would also point out that while we have a history of fighting against things that we think are not right, we also have a good history of encouraging things that help affordable housing. So TRICOM has gone through three phases, it's extremely well-run, the 40B was non-contentious for the most part. And the deniability that the town council mentioned, that if we hit 10% of our housing stock being declared subsidized housing, that we were able to deny this, currently, according to the figures that have gotten from our land use director, we are 9.5%. So we are a full 18 units short of 10%. I think that speaks in our report, in our public comment, that we have a long history of supporting affordable housing, where it makes sense, and when it makes sense. And I think to build 60-foot homes, you know, 60-foot units, of four levels, for 200 affordable housing, when we're 18 short, among a rash of other things, I think raises my eyebrow, let's put it that way. So I think we're going to make every case we can in the state in many different avenues, in many different perspectives of this case. So I'm hopeful too, but it's going to take a lot of work, and it will take some funding to do this, but I'm hopeful that we come to a good decision for the town, and everybody who's going to be affected by it. Anybody else in the comments? Board in the comments?
Mr. Prager. Yeah, thank you. That's a point I want to build on a little bit, the fact that we are 18 units short now, just because we fall below the threshold, that leaves us open to any project that gets proposed, I mean theoretically, under this law, just by being sure, we can be at 9.9% and be three units short, and if somebody proposes a budget for 800 units, technically we have to eat that, according to the law. So that's just draconian, and I think that needs to be part of our package of arguments, and I won't put certain other points out there, there are going to be questions, but that period is closed. I just want to go back to, I'll move to three of the, I'll find a few of my syllabus, for local concerns. I apologize maybe to this, we said, I don't know if these are all inclusive and tightly enumerated, or if these are just illustrative points, but certainly we can make many other arguments along this same spirit, or non-scholes. And even if we can't specifically enumerate that... Uh, and even if we can't specifically enumerate that, is putting another hundred, hundred fifty kids in school, uh, health and safety, something that is specifically enumerated? So it's really, uh, just, just a comment to your, to your point, you know, Mr. Chair, the fact that we fall just short of this threshold and now we have something of this magnitude, ram down my throat since everything's settled.
Any else on board? All right, this, uh, I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. This was not broadcast live, it will be broadcast early today, uh, so please, if you have other people who you know who are interested, please have them seek it out either on, uh, public access cable or on the YouTube channel from, uh, Lunenburg Public Access so they can see it. It was a great discussion, a great overview of the process and I guess we'll just take it from here as we go. So I'd like to motion from the board, good journey. So, sorry, second. All in favor, who said aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And I'd like to thank everybody for coming.